Okay, folks, this is Book Talk with Corbin. I'm your host. And we have a returning guest, friend of the show, good brother in the Lord. And he's gonna, um, he's gonna make an announcement today. And I think it's pretty dag on important, very important. And I normally want my listeners to carefully take note as to what this man's saying. But I like for my listeners to make sure that they forward this podcast to a minimum of three of their friends and ask those three friends to pass it on to two of their friends. Uh, cause we need, we need to get this out. Brother Matt, glad you're here with it.
Hey, definitely, Corbin. I appreciate you having me on.
Sure. And brother, um, you have an important announcement to make.
Yes.
What you plan on doing. So what is that announcement? What are you looking to do?
All right. I technically got this all filed about a month ago. But basically, I'm just gonna go ahead and throw my hat out there. I am running for a school board in the fifth district of Jefferson County.
Okay, fifth district.
Yes, in the fifth district.
And who, who, who is your opponent right now? Who right now is sitting in that, in that seat?
Uh, currently it's Linda Duncan.
Okay.
And, um, I'm not absolutely certain, just because I've heard rumors and you know how it is in politics. Everybody says this or says that, but there were rumors that she might retire. Nevertheless, uh, you know, I'm, I'm ready to take on, you know, any opponent and go after this. Because, um, basically this is a issue, um, that has been in my heart. God's kind of put on my heart for many years actually and prepared me for it. Um, essentially, you know, I am a product of the Jefferson County Public School System. And, um, I've seen things in my own experience. I went through a large amount of abuse when I was in middle school. And I even had my tooth knocked out.
Wow.
And, um, well, the good thing is I was young enough to wear it regenerated. Nevertheless, um, yeah, I just went through a whole lot there. And there was a story by the Courier Journal that went over it back in the mid nineties. And, um, essentially I, uh, I was able to find opportunities and get over these things. And had a good career in athletics and wrestling. And essentially after I, um, uh, moved on, then I felt a call to go into ministry. And I just saw a lot of youth, I'd been a youth minister, uh, a couple of times and a children's minister. And essentially you started to see some of the byproducts of what was going on in our system. And what's been going on lately, uh, we kind of went into an advanced stage of the Jefferson County Public School System, along with many other schools across the country. But essentially, um, this stuff has just gone rapid. However, we've had seeds planted. We've had bad seeds planted in our public school system for decades. And it's time to address this. You know, there was a, a shooting, uh, back in September. A sixteen year old got shot to death and a couple of elementary school kids, uh, were, um, they were harmed and shot, but they weren't like shot to death or anything. It was grazed or something, but long story short, um, how can school be a safe place? If you cannot even make it to school, you know? And when we see this stuff happen, you know, if you homeschool your kids versus having public school kids, who's more likely to have been, you know, um, you know, gone through these things? Whether it's murder or fights or thieves or, you know, rape and all this kind of stuff. Um, you know, this is not right. This is something, you know, very perverted, you know? And that's what's going on in our school system. So that's where my heart's at. And, uh, I've got, basically I do have a platform, if you want me to go over that with four points.
Yeah, yeah, the first four points, go ahead, do them real quick, brother, please.
Okay. Uh, the first one is say no to indoctrination. The school systems are going out of bounds. You know, they wanted to kick God out of the school, but I'm just asking, will they kick the devil out of school? They teach a lot of things that are what we call metaphysical. School for the public should just be physical. We should know about math, science, reading, uh, technology, basically different business and survival skills. That's what it should be for. However, when they give their worldview and they instruct the children and then tell them that their grades depend on if they, you know, repeat this worldview or repeat this mantra, there's a problem. You know, that is not what school is for. You know, the parents should have autonomy. And that means the parents should instruct their children in their faith and in their life and their philosophy. You know, that, uh, the, the United States is a free country. We should have free minds. So that, that's the biggest thing and there's a list of different forms. I think the most popular problem right now is the CRT movement, but there's dozens of other things. So, um, that'll be the first point. And that's one of the problems is we could go over this for so many hours. Number two, no low test scores. Now, we did a documentary recently and, uh, Corbin, you participated. And we talked to a expert named Richard Ennis. And he showed, uh, twenty, maybe twenty-five years of, um, research into test scoring from, uh, children. And, um, long story short, it's abominable. You know, I spoke to an African American group recently and I asked them, is it acceptable for only thirty-three percent of African American youth to read and write properly coming out of elementary school? They said, no. I said, sorry, that was the white kids. The, uh, the African American kids are at eighteen percent. You know, it's, it's just horrible. So, um, that's, that's the obvious next thing.
Let me stop you right there. You had mentioned Roy Ennis and I just wanted to say to my listeners, go to my webpage and you'll see that I have at least two interviews of Roy Ennis. So what brother Matt is stating, what he's telling you, I mean, it's, it's, it's spot on, it's dead on. You just can't deny it. It's clear. And I'm glad that this is, that was number two of his four point program. Continue, brother. Go into the third one.
Number three, fiscal responsibility. This is one of those, I know it's not an emotional topic, but I'm just gonna tell you straight up, okay? We went through a forced nine percent tax raise about a year or two ago. And when that happened, some of us conservatives gave out a petition. And I'll tell you what, people talk about culture, but let me tell you, red and yellow, black and white. They did not think a tax hike was right. Okay? It is, um, a huge thing. And not to mention, this is the same organization that is, um, they got five hundred million dollars from Joe Butt. Okay? They, um, have a budget right now. Uh, they tried to get two billion dollars and then they passed one point eight seven billion dollars for just one county. And it's not like the biggest city, it's not like New York or LA, okay? But just one county needs almost two billion dollars. And when they start to take this, it takes from the culture. And people wonder, what about my opportunities? Well, they just took your opportunities. You know, and these kids, oh, I believe the children of the future. Well, if the future stays the same route it's on right now, those kids will not have those opportunities. Somebody's gotta pay back. And so we are being crippled now by this giant massive load. And there's a lot of things that, you know, they could do better on. So that's my, my third point. Uh, maybe not the most intellectual, but I'll tell you what, it's gonna hit you, it's gonna hit you hard as if it's not already.
Right, okay. It's going to the fourth one, fourth and final one.
Fourth one, fourth one is safety. And, um, this is both for children and teachers. When I was in the public school back in middle school, I had my tooth knocked out. I had a classroom of, um, let's see, in a gym class, there's five classes combined. And they, uh, they had a fellow start rallying everybody up while the gym teacher sat there for usually forty-five minutes a day. They sat there on their rears forty-five minutes a day. We were just supposed to sit there. And so when the kids started getting rowdy, unfortunately I was the victim. And so they would chant Fat Mad and all this kind of stuff, really scar me emotionally. Well, after all that said and done, um, I had to deal also with something that happened to my mother. Okay? My mother was a public school teacher. Now, I'm not gonna say that we're gonna agree on politics, okay? But I will say this, um, it really hit me hard. What happened was she was working in middle school at that time. And a middle school student jumped upon her back and basically crippled her, making her, um, have to retire like a decade early. And, you know, um, I don't know what her response was B about how she felt about it. You know, maybe she felt like that's, you know, taking one for the team. But honestly, um, that's not okay with me. That's not okay with anybody to mess with my family. And teachers go through a lot of this stuff. And they're doing insane things right now, you know? There are students who are not, um, they don't, they don't go home when they, you know, get into a big brawl. You know, they'll just keep them sitting there because they don't wanna lose certain funding from the government. And, you know, kids and adults are, you know, being victim to, you know, assault and possibly even greater things, you know? You, we've heard about school shootings and stuff, you know? We need to get control of this situation. And, uh, they're not, they're, they're, they're not on purpose. They're literally, um, you know, and maybe, you know, I, I've heard secret testimony basically, okay? They don't wanna reveal themselves, but they told me the principals are saying, don't send them home, don't stop them, don't do this, don't do that. And they're letting all this evil happen and that's gotta come to a stop.
Yeah. Brother, let, let me, uh, let me do some quick questions. First of all, let's, let's go back to, you know, you, you just gave us your four point, um, program, so to speak, which, you know, very clear, very articulate as far as explaining to us why you wanna run, uh, for the fifth district, right?
Yes.
Fifth district seat. Now, who are, what are some of the schools in the fifth district?
Um, basically that would be surrounding like, um, uh, a large chunk of Valley Station, Fairdale, Hillview, um, where I live, uh, Iroquois Park area.
Okay.
And there might be a couple of neighborhoods in the middle of that.
Okay.
Um, and so, you know, it, it's one of those things where, you know, they, they give you like a, uh, at least right now, they've given us like a little color code instead of specific areas.
Okay.
But basically schools within that area. So like definitely, you know, from what I can see, Fairdale's totally covered. So let's say Fairdale High School would be an obvious one, um, Iroquois Park High School, uh, or maybe that's Iroquois High School. I, I actually could just go walk down the street and look it up later. But yeah, Iroquois High School and, um, you know, um, maybe Valley High School, there's another district there with a guy named Marshals, that's probably his, but you know, that is the general area.
And how would you describe, uh, Lyndon Dunk Duncan's voting record? You know, what would be some few words that you would attach to her voting record?
Well, basically, um, she has said some nice sentiments in the past. And, you know, I appreciate anybody saying something. But essentially she's, uh, she's basically a liberal. Uh, she was, for instance, she was the one that led the charge of like, hey, let's, you know, force the mask on everybody. That's, that's what we gotta do in the school system. And the problem is, is that masks don't work. Okay? It's just a little scientific fact. Unless you've got the most high-tech surgical mask covering everything up, you know, mask will not, you know, stop a virus from getting around those areas, especially when you itch and all that kind of stuff. So it's not really effective, but it can be psychologically scarring. And I've seen that with an extended member of my family, uh, just basically going into depression. Uh, a little girl and, um, you know, starting to like do all the black makeup thing and all that kind of stuff. Just a lot of, you know, she's going through therapy. But basically, uh, yeah, they can be scarring, they can also be not healthy because you're keeping in all your bacteria when you breathe. Um, but there's, there's several different issues which shows her to be, uh, more on the liberal side. Unfortunately, a D minus will look like an A when you have a bunch of Fs around. And so, you know, we, we've got some more pure, more, you know, very strongly socialist, uh, leadership, uh, along with that as well. And so I'm really not only concerned about taking her spot against her, but I'm even more concerned about having a voice to, um, the other board members and seeing if I can help move that system along.
Now, brother, is it, you know, and you've been living in that area for a little bit. You, you speak to groups, you talk to folks. Is critical race theory from the grassroots, is that a grassroots demand in your area? You know, the?
I'll tell you what, it's one of these things where there's increments. So, um, you have a lot of movements with, um, you know, especially in media and stuff with the, uh, critical race theory narrative of the, uh, African Americans always being victims. And the problem is, not that we don't admit that there was a lot of victimhood in different places, but the issue is, is that you start to make such a stigma to where an African American youth thinks that they are, you know, cursed for life. Okay? That they're always never gonna make it, they're never gonna get, get ahead. So go ahead and break the rules. Then you also put the stigma onto the, uh, the white culture. And essentially, and, and, you know, I don't even think these are proper paradigms before anything else. I mean, there's so many connections with American people, even, you know, genetic relations over, you know, generations. But essentially, uh, the, uh, what happens in the white culture is that they start to get into a, um, a mysticism of, uh, the ghetto life or the hood life and so over the generations that's built up, but it is all artificial. It's from the top down. It's from, you know, you have a lot of influence in the universities, but you also got a creeping influence and now a dominating influence on the high schools. So essentially, you know, when you see people, yeah, go ahead.
So you're not, you're not, you're not getting the sense that from the grassroots, parents, black and white are saying, hey, we gotta have critical race theory in, in the public school, you know, that's what we want. You're not?
Yeah, you know, essentially we, when we did like, um, talking, you know, trying to talk to the school board or attempting to talk to the school board, um, they had a lot of people and usually they were already associated with the school system. You know, they were part of the teachers unions or teachers and, you know, family of the teachers and, and all this kind of stuff. So you, uh, basically had the system moving in that direction. And a lot of the other people just didn't really wanna mind it, you know? They just, you just didn't want anything to do with it. And generally, um, that's been the crippling thing with what I've seen is I've seen people just kinda, you know, do whatever they want, you know? Um, teachers have admitted to me that the purpose of public schooling was daycare. You know, it, it's like, you know, the education, hopefully maybe, but really, you know, people wanted the school system because they wanted the daycare. And so if you really are of that attitude where you just wanna daycare, then it just doesn't matter to you. You know, you just wanna like, go do your thing for a little while and then the kids can come back home and do whatever. And, um, go ahead.
And what are some, what are like one or two things that you think, um, you know, one or two things you'd like to see the school board do as far as raising reading and math and science proficiency, proficiency skills? I cannot imagine what kind of future we're offering our young people when from elementary school through middle school through high school and there's huge chunks of, uh, young people, black and white, who are not at reading level. They're not at math grade level. They're, they're just not proficient at all in those two critical subjects. What are one or two things you think you'd like to see the, the Board of Education to do to, to, to deal with that?
Well, I tell you what, um, some of the stuff, the, uh, the Board of Education has kind of shaken away its responsibilities. Uh, the, uh, the Kentucky education, uh, through the Senate has basically, uh, thrown out these, uh, onsite, uh, people, which basically, um, and I don't know why, I just forgot the third word, but anyhow, um, they'll, they'll take two parents and the principal and maybe somebody else like a, another teacher. Um, and basically the four will decide the curriculum for a, uh, school. And I'm thinking, hold on, if this is traditionally the responsibility of the public school, why is it that now, you know, they no longer have any say or authority or anything like that? So I do wanna take on that issue, but, um, from what I know right now, um, we've seen some changes in reading, uh, they, they basically did away with phonics. You know, in math, they've come up with an idea called fuzzy math. And, um, with science, you know, as I said, um, when you deal with issues like evolution or like, um, global warming, what you're really looking at is you have theories and, you know, you wanna teach a theory, that's fine. But they're teaching those things as fact when they're not really proven facts.
Right, exactly.
And so what happens then is a form of indoctrination. And while you're doing that, what's going on with technology? If we, if the public school has gotten people hooked on, um, smartphones, calculators and, and all those different pieces of technology, why is it that they'll teach them that, but they won't teach them how to fix something? You know, why can't they be taught about technology and learn how to actually apply it? You know, we need to kinda go into a more tech savvy generation. High school is supposed to be higher learning. High school is supposed to be higher learning. So if you graduate from high school, you should be ready for the world. And the college should only be something for extra benefit. And yet now we have people, uh, graduating from the public school system who do not have enough science credit to actually go through a college and get a science degree.
Right, right.
You know, so it, 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 it's just crazy, but those are some three basic things. The philosophy of post-modernism has infected our educational system. And post-modernism teaches that there is no absolute truth. If there's an absolute truth, how do you know that there's certain truth or good truth or any truth? If there's no truth, then what are you teaching them? Cause what you're teaching them is not necessarily true.
Right.
You know, a lot of people at our taxpayer expense.
Folks, this is Book Talk with Corbin. I'm your host. We have with us a, um, good friend of the show, Matt Singleton. He's, he's announced that he will be running for the fifth district, uh, seat, Board of Education. He's outlined his four-point, uh, platform. Um, it's very important that, um, people listen to this interview a couple of times, share it with your friends. Cause, uh, you know, my, my personal opinion, education is one of the most critical issues facing this country. Not just Louisville, Kentucky, not just other counties throughout the Commonwealth of Kentucky, but all throughout the, uh, all throughout the United States. And I, I, you know, I couldn't agree more with a lot of what, uh, brother Singleton has, has pointed out to us. Folks, let me, let me just say this, you know, sticking in my little two, three cents. My, my big concern is, is reading. And, uh, a lot of minority students are not at reading level. I used to work for a university. I looked at some of the papers, absolutely horrendous.
Yeah.
These are freshmen in college, absolutely horrendous, didn't make any sense. It was ridiculous. You know how sometimes, brother, you know, sometimes the professor use a red pen?
Yep.
Pardon something wrong? It, it looked like this, it looked like this professor just took a red pen and he, he just did a painting on the paper. And, and that was not unusual, that was common.
Yeah.
And I, I, go ahead.
I worked a part-time job or a temporary job once. And basically we were, um, looking over a lot of the essays. Now, this was like senior year of high school. And yeah, it was horrendous. It was really like third grade reading as far as I could.
Yeah.
And these were the essays, you know, and it just, it was abysmal, but that was like ten years ago. So imagine what's going on now.
Well, I, you know, what I just recounted, that was about four or five years ago. So it hasn't gotten, it hasn't gotten better. And then my big concern is how people are responding, you know, like you said, taking out phonics. And then you have these folks who are talking about preferred pronouns. How in the heck is that gonna raise the literacy level of our students? Preferred pronouns and this whole big stink about critical race theory. No one is opposed to the teaching of, uh, the accomplishments of black folk in the United States of America. No one's opposed to, uh, teaching, you know, facts, historical facts. Um, so, you know, and so when you have someone like Dr. Ricky Jones at the University of Louisville saying people who oppose critical race theory are racist, that's a lie. That's a brazen lie. And this is something I, I, I hope that you address in your campaign as you, as you talk to people. The teach, the teaching, again, you'd already, you already talked about it. There's a difference between education and indoctrination.
Yeah.
Hey, I studied theory, different theories in college, Freud, Marx.
Yeah.
You on down the road, but they were not taught to me as facts. They just said, well, here's the way this person views the world.
Yeah.
You know, how, how, you know, what is your thinking? Well, I don't like that. Well, why don't you like it? You know, what's some of your evidence? What are some of your counterpoints, you know? But critical race theory, they wanna teach it as fact. And if you oppose it, you're called a racist. And that's a lie. And we need to stop this whole push on the part of people coming into the educational system and wanting to indoctrinate our students. That's not raising math literacy, math skills, reading skills, critical, it's not doing that. And thank God we have somebody like you, brother Matt, who's just said, you know what, enough's enough. I gotta step up and say something. I gotta step up and do something. We really?
And I mean, I've just seen this stuff infect people in real life. I remember, uh, two or three years ago, a, a girl came up to me who had went to school with me. And she told me about how terrible things are going on in the school that we went to, that she had a daughter who was beaten up by three boys. And essentially, you know, at least they're, from their perspective, they got away, they got away with it. And when you start messing with gender issues, you're really giving a license for abusing women.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Cause at the end of the day, you're saying that, you know, this big six foot two guy is on the same level with a five foot four girl. And so if she mouths awful, then he can go wham, you know? Because maybe he's identifying as a girl, you know? Oh, he wants to identify a girl, he can go into a girl's restroom and, uh, you know, violate a girl. You know, when, when gay marriage got, uh, you know, the fake law of the land because it really wasn't constitutional. But when that, when that came to pass, you know, there was immediately a story of a boy going into a girl's restroom and beating the snot out of a, uh, out of a little girl. Then there was also, um, you know, over in Virginia, you know, a, uh, boy, you know, acting as a transgendered went in and raped a girl. Then, um, you know, when they moved him to another school, he raped another girl. Okay? This is a, a license for crime because we need to know the difference between a boy and a girl. And, you know, it's just one of those deals where it's absolutely irrational. But that's because the worldview that is being bullied to the students. You know, basically forming a new culture, that worldview is a bully worldview. These people are bullies.
Yes.
And I don't like bullies. As I said, I was bullied in middle school, but then I decided I'd get tough. And so I took martial arts and I took wrestling. And before you know it, the only thing I had trouble with is I had to correct myself because I was like, well, just because I can defend myself, that mean I need to fall down that route and hurt somebody else.
Right.
And?
And you know, brother, you're, you're bringing up good points. What can, what gets me is, is that when someone like you speaks up on this biological bullying nonsense, there, you're, you are putting yourself at risk.
Yeah.
Someone may say, hey, we gotta, hey, we gotta, we gotta shut this guy down, we gotta ban him. Um, if he's on Facebook, we gotta take him off. He's on YouTube, we gotta take him off. He's on Twitter, we gotta take him off. Is he working? You gotta get him fired, you know, things like that. It's like just free speech is, is just completely and totally thrown out the window. And a lot of times people don't, aren't, uh, Americans aren't concerned about it because it's not the government doing it. Okay? And my attitude is there, there's, there's the culture of free speech in the United States of America. You know, we, we've always, we've always had that, you know? We're, we're gonna speak up and speak out against something we think is wrong. And when we saw someone literally have their life threatened. And when we saw someone literally have their life threatened or their livelihood threatened, um, you know, we said, well, you know, I may not like what that guy has to say, or I may not agree with what he has to say, but dang on it, I'll, I'll go to war to defend his right to say it.
Yeah.
We've lost that culture. We've, we've, we're, well, we haven't lost it. I don't think we've lost it, but we're losing it. And I, and I, and I hate to sound partisan, but I think a lot of that is coming from the left. Democratic Party, this, these so-called democratic socialists, progressive woke folk. I think most of that's coming from the left.
Well, and I'll be fair, because that's, pray we was good in making a point. There's difference between a liberal and a leftist. You know, it's one thing to disagree. It's another thing to take away people's rights. And I'll just be honest with you. If you live in my neighborhood, uh, two nights ago, all right, I hear gunshots. Then there's cops going on in this neighborhood where like my wife, from our, you know, from our door is filming, you know, the cops at the murder scene and all that kind of stuff. All right? I am in a place of risk of my life. And honestly, if things go the way they go, ten years from now, we're all gonna hit it. Okay? And am I going to wait for that to happen? Or am I gonna risk mine uh, right now and just get over with it? All right? My motto is this, I, I'm just gonna tell you this straight up. If you got the sling, I've got the stones. Now let's go slay Goliath. There, there, there's a point where it's like, okay, which way you wanna die? Okay, well, I'm gonna die fighting. Okay? So if I have things taken from me, so be it. Cause I got something bigger than them and that's the Lord Jesus Christ. My God is the one who's kept me alive all my life. I had heart surgery when I was a baby. I was not meant to naturally live. But God put me in the right place at the right time because he had a cause for me and I am gonna follow that cause. There have been times where I have lost everything. And you know, I lost my family, I lost my home, I lost my health. And at the end of the day, I was, I was not gonna sit there and listen to the devil who had taken all these things. I'm gonna listen to God. God had a purpose for me. And so that, that's my life right there.
Folks, this is Book Talk with Corbin. I'm your host. We just interviewed Matt Singleton. He's talking about he's running for a um, a position on the Board of Education. And you just, last thirty seconds or so, you just hurt his heart. And it's up to you to decide, hey, do we, we want that guy, a guy like that who has expressed that strong, the, the strength in, in Christ attitude? Do we want that on the Board of Education? If you do, vote for him. If you do, share this interview with as many people as you know. And ask them to share it with as many people as they know. Okay? Brother, do you, do you have a website up uh, around your candidate, uh, your candidacy?
I am in the middle of that. We've got some big projects we've been working on. We're putting on the finishing touches of a documentary called um, Another Brick in the Wall. And uh, that'll be?
That old Pink Floyd song, okay?
Exactly, yeah. You know, we don't need no thought control. Right? But um, essentially, yeah, and you know, right now, we're just kind of working with it, spicing up a little bit because I know documentaries can be, you know, very boring if you, if, if you're not careful. So we're putting those finished touches on it. And uh, I am in the middle of construction of um, my website. And when I get that up, I'll definitely uh, uh, send you the link, maybe put it on this episode and a couple of other things. But yeah, we're constructing the website, finishing off the um, documentary. And the election is in November, so I'm lucky. I'm not going, it's a nonpartisan race. I've got some time on my hands to get everything ready, but it's time to get the word out right now, you know?
Here we go. All right, brother. Well, I'm gonna have to conclude it here, tell my uh, listeners, again, let's get this out there, let's spread it out, let's get it out there, let's get it out there, let's get it out there. Um, I should have this posted on my website, booktalkwithcorbin.com. And uh, yeah, as soon as we get that link, listeners, I will be getting that out to you because this brother's gonna need some, he's gonna need some resources. He's gonna need some financial uh, contributions and all. Brother, thank you so much. We will be in touch, okay?